We are. Some crazy guy says he's a pretty special guy. He's the guy that screams at people. Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's on the bench.
That was one of our roles.
Yeah. No. No, I don't want to. I haven't asked him, "Can you write your life?" I just tap him on the shoulder. Hey! Hey! We almost have the Republicans. But each convince two people apart. They're barely even six dollars. I've been hearing they're paying off. They're most friendly for a while. They didn't give me the caps. It's like, it's really...
Oh, yeah. I get better. I did. Well, I...
Well, but I haven't been able to see the buck.
The Alexa is small. That's my Alexa system. She is so small.
Hey, folks, if you are not a candidate, we're gonna need some questions. These folks are... Okay? If you are a candidate, would you please, and I know you are, go ahead and find your place. We are in our better order. She, she, she...
Yeah, maybe be sure to make it work. Everybody just wants to look at...
Yes.
Yeah, we gotta listen to...
Hello.
You're doing anything exciting?
Always worth a quest, protect, protect. Do you have some cards? There's a question. Yeah, that's... If you decide to write a question during the program, just raise it to us. I'll give you a card. You want to fill it out on the table.
Sure.
Okay, everybody, we're gonna start our forum today. And I want to welcome everybody to the League of Women Voters of Plumas County. Tonight, we're holding a forum for Portola City Council. And according to the county clerk in Portola, this is the biggest number of candidates that have ever run. And we're really excited about that. I love to see people run for office. And I admire you all. And thank you for running. It's very important to fill these positions. So I'm with the League of Women Voters. And I'm also a county supervisor. But I've been in the League of Women Voters before I was a county supervisor because I loved politics and I loved going to forums. And it sort of made me want to run for office. We've been sponsoring election forums for 26 years here in Plumas County. Part of our mission is to engage public in democratic processes. And we have voter registration forums and information on valid initiatives, pros and cons. And we have some of our brochures and some of that information on the back table. Also candidates that if you have any of your own campaign stuff, you could put them on the back table. Just your campaign, no other campaigns. And let's see here. So what are some of the things we do is we hold forums. And we also do an essay contest for students. And we're doing one right now. Every year, we do one. And then we have a winner and some other winners. The, we have the 250, isn't it 250? And then the other honorable mentions. Thank you. So we, and we do that during the fall. And then in January, we pick the winner with judges. Our members serve as judges. And they read all these essays. And they don't have names. And we don't know who did them. And then they picked the winners. And then they come to the Board of Supervisors. And we hear their essay, the winning essay. And also, it's printed in the newspaper. So that's one of the things we do besides holding forums. Okay, so we better get started because we have a large group today. But I want to introduce, and there's little cards. You need to think of questions and hand them to Kathy. And then she's gonna bring them up to Susan here, who will screen them for libel and make sure they're appropriate. So start thinking, put on your thinking caps. And we got to ask this group here of candidates a lot of questions. So let's, because we have a lot of time. And what we're gonna do, first, I want to introduce our league members here. We have Susan Christensen and Kathy Felker. Nance Reed, who's gonna be our timer. And I'm gonna, we'll explain that in a minute. Ruth Jackson. And we have a new member, Jennifer Eagle. Anybody I missed? I don't think so. So we encourage, it's a bipartisan group. It's not Democrats or Republicans or independents. It's any woman that wants to improve democracy in our county and education. We invite to join our group. And men too. We have men join it too. And they're very valuable. And the League of Women Voters was formed in Plumas County in 1993. Nationally, the league was founded in 1920 as a result of the campaign to give women the right to vote. The league is open to all men and women of voting age. Okay, so with that, we're gonna get started. And our timer is Nance Reed. Everybody will have two minutes to talk on the topic. She'll hold up the sign two minutes. Then she'll show you when you have one minute. Then the next one is 30 seconds. And then stop. Thank you. So keep your eyes on her. She did a really good job last week. We had a big forum in Grable for Congressional District One. And she did an excellent job. So we're gonna have to move pretty fast. What the first thing you're gonna do? Oh, and I also want nobody to applaud or make noises like groans, like dislike or you like. You know, just keep it. We want to be respectful of all these candidates. And we want to be civil. So we want to keep any reaction. Just keep it all neutral. What I always say is, is you're gonna hear all the issues. They're gonna speak on the issues. And then you're gonna go vote. So that's all you have to do is listen and vote. You don't have to make noises like yes or no. Okay. So our opening statements will be three minutes. Okay, two minutes. That was the congressional one, I'm sorry. Two minutes. And so you can introduce, we'll just go down the line. There's a mic. And you'll pass it down the line. And you can stand up. Sometimes it's better to stand up if you want. You don't have to. If you'd rather, just sit down. But you can tell us about yourself and why you're running for Portola City Council. And well, first, you know, I want to introduce all the candidates. We have Max Bradshaw, who, he did contact me. He said he could not be here. We have Larry Douglas, Timothy Kref, Pat Morton, Phil Olds, let's see, Stan Piler. I said his name right. It was practicing. And then we have Bill Powers, Kent Scott, Casey Williams, and Terry Woods. Okay, so we'll start with Larry. Two minutes. And make sure you watch Nance.
Watch your... The current state of the city appears to be hopeless. It is in a state of flight, not only with unhealthy buildings, but also without funds needed to provide vital services. Our infrastructure has not been as useful like. We have some of the highest levels of poverty and unemployment in the nation. We have vacant buildings and real estate signs all over the city. We are not considered a disadvantaged city by the state. I'm Larry Douglas, and once again, I'm running for city council. I've been attending city council meetings and board of supervisors to bring progress to our communities. I am living in a redevelopment project on Versus Street. I have been doing businesses in Plumas County as a high-tier community development center. His plan is to find a need in the village, use my resources and volunteers. Our biggest problem is that our representatives should not focus on implementing the goals of our general plan and the progress of our water sewer plants. I'm running for a seat on city council to fill the need to jumpstart our economic recovery.
Thank you. No applause, just pass it to Terry.
Well, I didn't prepare a nice opening statement because I wasn't sure what to expect. So I guess I'll just get to learn a little bit about me. I've been here my entire life, moved away a couple of years at a time, then come back. Pretty much the biggest reason why I'm even running for a seat is just because I've had a lot of people say, "You need to run. You need to run. You should do it. You should do it." So I said, "Yeah, come on out." Just, you know, drive with my foot in the door. You know, I've got two young boys and another one on the way. And I want to make this be a good community and space for them to live. I do think that there's a lot of things that can be changed to improve it. Just in my lifetime that I've been here, you know, I have memories of a kid. Community sense being a lot stronger. And I feel like there's been a big loss of community spirit, so to speak. So I think it's just good to get some younger generation, people involved, just because life adapts, things need to adapt. And I think that if we get somebody younger up in the face of everything, then you could end up getting more youthful people attending events like this and putting in their input. So that, you know, you're not just catering to one generation or the other. I think that everything needs to be well-rounded. So there you have it.
Hi, can we stop one minute? We have, hi BJ.
I thought it was at seven o'clock, seven thirty.
No, it was seven. Come on, we just started. You're not, you're fine. We just started.
I noticed at seven thirty, I've come back to be a little hurt.
So we have BJ Pearson, another candidate. There's a seat for you, BJ. We're just introducing ourselves and why we're running for, why everybody's running for Portola City Council.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank everyone that is here tonight to hear what each candidate has to say. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing and hosting this forum. I ran in for city council because I care about our community. I have the time needed to invest in our community. I know the issues and have worked many hours over the last two years to solve and find answers. There are no easy answers or quick solutions to some of our issues, which are mainly our roads, our infrastructure, our water, our sewer, the blight. And we can go on and on. We have many. But hopefully, we are slowly getting answers to some of them and some funding for some of them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Phil. First, I also would like to thank the league for putting us on and all of you for coming. My candidacy is based on my deep commitment to do everything I can to bring Portola a better place to live. It is, after all, our hometown. My major concern at the moment is the threat of wildfire and preventative work that we are doing to avoid becoming the next Redding, or Lake County, or weed, or war. What we've accomplished this year is obtained national recognition as a fire-wast community with the help of the residents, who turned in 1,326 volunteer hours of fire to save work around their homes. Thanks to all of you that took them. They took them in and filled out your time sheets at ERC and elsewhere. I also worked closely with John Hodgson, who owns 192 acres, long 815, convincing him to pass the K-20 acres on the town side, classified spare fire to enter my Cal Fire. At no charge, I did all of his forestry work, then wrote and submitted a Cal Fire grant. It got approved for $109,000 to complete the treatment on the rest of it. Finished the project this fall or early next spring. Long-term goal, in my mind, is a fire-stick perimeter surrounding the entire community and a high level of knowledge and preparedness within. Coarse water and sewer rakes and our ancient infrastructure are always on my mind also. I suppose every rate increase that has come along for the last six years, the fuel and facility grants is our only chance to fix it. The result of staff and UCT go over and get on a huge one, it'll go a long ways towards fixing the problem. Not this one, though. We need to keep looking. There's a lot more pro-life records speak for itself than simply ask you for the honor of serving here for four more years. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. When I decided to run, I had a good friend of mine phone me. And he said, "Why in the world are you doing this?" Well, I've lived in Portola almost my entire life. I grew up here. I went to school here. My children went to school here. And I've had a business in Portola ever since I graduated. I've tried to contribute over the many years to various areas. I was on the city council twice. And I was a county court supervisor once. I have been watching the city council, not just this council, over the last 15 years. And it seems like the job is sort of ceremonial. They go to meetings. They have a agenda. They discuss it. But they never come up with specific items to address the problem. The problem is, we've lost logging. We've lost a railroad. Lake Davis now is going downhill. We have to find another source of economic activity. I can do that then. I've done that all my life. I have created more subsidies in Plumas County than any other individual. While on the city council, I brought in more money to the people of Portola while on that council than any other individual. As a county supervisor, I brought more money back to the city of Portola than any other individual. What I'd like for you to do tonight, if you would, do me a favor. Ask me the tough questions. Ask me how I did it. Ask me what it was. I'm here to earn your vote. I'm worried about the city. We got a problem. And I can solve it, but I can't do it without your help. Your responsibility is to evaluate each citizen up here tonight that's offering their time and effort, and then make a decision on who is best for the town.
Good evening, everybody. I do better, I guess, standing up because I'm a little nervous. Anyway, so my name is Stan Piler. I've been a resident here for 13 years. My family consists of my wife Lisa, my four, 48, Taylor, Carol, and Ee Coachy, which all graduated. They play a lot of sports. I was active in the community, so was my wife, through baseball, football, and so forth. The reason why that I am interested in this seat is because I worked for the hospital and I've been with the hospital for 11 years. So I started off as a carpenter there. And 11 years later, I'm director of plant operations. So I've overseen security, dietary, housekeeping, as well as engineering. In my position there, I'm familiar with budgets, grants, and so forth. And what I offer to bring to this seat, I can tell you this evening, is not only the honesty, but to be able to listen to you with the open ear and make the right choice for our community. To make sure that I can be a part of making a decision for all of you. Thank you.
I'll stand up to make sure I still can. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, first of all. These are so important to our community. And just giving you, who will go out and talk to another 10 or 15 people, what you heard and who you heard it from, I think that's super important. I've been on the council. I've been on the Board of Supervisors. I'm presently on about 12 different boards and commissions, as well as coaching the Socrates, the Portland High, who wanted to beat Paradise tonight, two to one. I'm here because we had a bad reputation because things are falling apart around us. Our water system, our sewer system, and our roads are simply falling apart. And it's been in the last about eight months now that we've been able to acquire a $35 million grant to help the sewer and water. It is in the works. It's developing. Caltrans is building a loop on the north side of town. And we expect that part of the horrible paving will get reestablished just with our sewer and water. There's a new spirit that is beginning. And we haven't had it in a long, long time. I grew up here. We used to have a water festival before we had railroad days. And there's a new spirit here. It involves recreation. It involves going out and finding big venues like the bicycle race at a Meyer. We have plans to start it actually in Portola this next year. So I'm looking forward to tonight. And thank you. And please bring all your questions.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kim Scott. Sorry, I wasn't sure if this was on. I did not prepare an opening statement tonight. Some of you may know me from the cannabis working group for the county. I'm also a co-author of a VTE. So I'm a huge proponent of seeing some economic returns from creating that kind of... Can you pull the microphone closer? Sorry, did you guys not hear me? There we go. I want to see Portola regain some of its economy. The people here are struggling. The young people are moving away. We, we have this opportunity. And I think that it might be the last good one we have. And so people ask me to step up because I'm not afraid to voice that. I'm not afraid to go against the Board of Supervisors. And I'm concerned more with the people in this community than the tourists that come here on vacation.
Good evening. My name is Casey Williams. I've been a resident of Portola for 21 years. My husband, Justin, born, raised here. Together, we each, we have six children, three each, which we've all raised in the Portola schools. And now we're starting on grandchildren in our Portola schools. I've been a business owner. I've worked for businesses here. I have family that have current businesses or past businesses. So we're pretty involved in that. Currently, I am working for a local, our local nonprofit, One Life Fully Lived. I'm the executive assistant to the founder, Tim Road. During my time here, I volunteered about eight years with the Seaworth Communal PTA, also the local district and state levels. I did six years with Feather River Little League and at the Portola preschool. A few visions I have as a council member would be, one, to find ways to bring money, possibly jobs, to the area through recreational tourism. Another is to continue to work with the plans in progress and see some completions of our infrastructure repairs for water, sewer, roads. And finally, I feel we need to bring back a sense of pride into our residents and build our community spirit back up. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for setting up the forum and to all of you who took the time to be here. I've lived in Portola in California for 32 years, then moved to Portola to start an insurance business 17 years ago. Why Portola? I saw Portola as a beautiful, small community with opportunities for new ventures. Unfortunately, the economy took a dive in 2008. We lost the mill, the railroad. Local businesses closed down. People were moving out of the city and are still moving out today. And also, there are no incentives for high school students after graduation. So they, they find their future someplace else. I specialize in writing commercial insurance, but also lost most of my clients due to lack of work here. I'm also an Air Force veteran. And I'm proud to have served my country. I go to city council for the last five years regularly. Why? Because I want to know how my tax dollars were being managed by our city council. I hear people complain about high water rates, potholes, trashy areas, drug abuse, and more. I also hear negative comments from outsiders. They say that Portola sucks. As a member of the community, I found those comments totally unacceptable, demeaning, and depressing. And therefore, that's the reason I'm running for city council again. Thank you very much.
Okay, Terry, we're gonna, just hold on to the mic because you're gonna start the next question. And we're gonna work way down, our way down this way. And we're gonna work way down, our way down this way. So this is the next question for everybody. How can you comment on a youth center for Portola? Can you comment on a youth center for Portola?
New youth center for Portola? I think that's a great idea. I think that we need more things to encourage people to do constructive things, okay? Not just for recreation. I would like to see some kind of vocational training for the children, and I think that's doable. I think that's one of the things I would like to see happen in Portola. Thank you.
I think there is a need for a youth center. Having raised kids here, sometimes they don't always get what they need through school. So maybe if there's a center with other programs where they can, like Terry said, learn some vocational information, have activities to keep them busy, and provide them with a safe place to go, that's definitely something we could use here. Let's see if I can get this right this time. There we go. I actually have been investigating the feasibility of creating a Boys and Girls Club for Portola. I've already started forming a local group of parents that are interested. I actually met with the city manager the other day and was questioning some of the buildings that we have available, if those might be appropriate to reach out for this kind of purpose. I think it's absolutely necessary. Most of the people that work here work far away, and they need somewhere for their kids to go after school before they get home from work. So this is, whether I'm on city council or not, you'll be seeing more of me discussing a Boys and Girls Club.
One of the things that I had the opportunity to do was go train the Boys and Girls Club in Keats Beach last spring. Trained in youth mental health first aid. Trainer in that. And after the meeting, it went very well. And after the meeting, the director there said, "We looked at Portola as a possible extension. They have campuses in Truckee, in Keats Beach, and somewhere out like Zephyr Cove or over in that area." And so I said, "Yeah, come on down." The other thing is always funding, because youth centers don't generate any money. And when I was growing up, we had pool hall, but that wasn't the same thing. The youth centers are expensive to operate, but the money that's available at the state level now and that is really geared toward youth is the CHMSA money, which is the Mental Health, California Mental Health Bill. And they are the person, and they're the people that did the Behavior Health Center, the Resource Center that's now in Portola, that moved out from the other. It's in every community now around the county. So I think that's probably the best place to start.
So I'm glad this question was brought up because one of my main things that was on my mind regarding this position is our high school seniors. So many times, even with my younger boys, as they went through, I'm grateful that they had a job and that they were actually heading somewhere. So so many years, I've had kids on a team that I coach, they are still hanging out at the basketball court, escape room park, one, two o'clock at night. So a youth center would be great for them. The thing that I'm more passionate about is if we can create a youth center for our youth here, that we look at creating a youth center that goes from summer through winter. Because when you look at our community with our youth, they are out in the fields. Not all of them, but there are a handful of kids that go out in the field, they do their partying and so forth. Now, working at a hospital, it breaks my heart to see these kids come in, get carefully out. So for many years, I've often felt that if we could do something as a community to keep our kids busy, to teach them what camaraderie and youth and just love and care, to give them a sense of ownership, so that they know that they're going somewhere. And make sure that the senior class, that I would like to follow up with the high school, to make sure that those seniors that are a handful, that don't have the opportunity, that we find the opportunity to make them successful. That we find maybe through our youth, that we could somehow support them so that they're confident, so that when the youth graduate, they're not hanging out along with all the other stuff that comes with hanging out.
Over the years, since I've been in business, I started and financed three different programs for youth. Two of those programs I taught. One of the students in those programs, who I'm very proud of, sitting next to me, Phil Oldson. Phil got right directly out of my program that I taught and financed, went to work in the woods, and he's been a success ever since. In fact, I wouldn't run against Phil, I'll be honest with you. I like Phil, I like what he's doing for the community, and I wouldn't run against him. If he was in the same class that I was, I would withdraw, because Phil's a good man. Having said that, Jared McCasson, he works for the city of Portola. He was also one of my students. We had a high school program that built a house that lives on Spruce Street, complete, start to finish. There's pictures, if you want to go back and look into Portola Report, that will show you. We built with high school seniors only, a complete house. We did a complete logging program with high school seniors. And I did one other program which I'm sort of proud of. We built a race car. Now, we had kids come in from younger classes on that because that was matter, sort of like a teaching moment. We can't do those kind of programs unless we put together an economic package to bring in outside industry. Now, I can do that. There are people that would like to live in Portola. We're all here, regardless of the economy, because we like it here. So we can do that, but we've got to start first. We've got to produce the means. And the means is an economic program to bring in jobs, lots of jobs. And don't tell me we can't do it, because I know we can. The time is right, everything is right, and we can do it.
Yeah, it's probably Joe Piers since all that was a temperful. Anyway, about a youth center, I think it would be a great idea, given a good curriculum and adequate funding. Not sure how we would do that, but I'm convinced it can be done. And also vocational training. Our kids graduating school, they need skills they can put straight to work. Not everybody's meant for college. Two of my sons aren't, one of them was. But yeah, anything we can do to make the future better for our children, it would spur a hard and late.
I agree. We've all watched our children go away from Portola after high school graduation. Some of them have come back, some of them haven't. I'm fortunate because I do have one son that came back. He was able to get a job with the railroad and was able to move back to Portola. My other son is not. We used to have vocational classes in school. We used to have automotive, we used to have construction, we used to have the building trades. And in fact, the first home was on Spruce Street, but the high school built, I think, five other homes after that, with the school district doing the funding. We need plumbers, we need electricians, we need landscapers, we need all kinds of construction workers, there's other things besides going to college. And so we do need to somehow find a way to implement getting some of those either through partnerships or something else to get some of the students trained that want to be trained. As far as the youth center goes, that would be a great idea. I know that Richard Blair, who runs the youth ministries, that's one thing he's looking at, is trying to buy the old junior high school up at the, or by the high school, and turn that into a youth center. I don't know, I haven't heard likely how far along he's come on that, or what exactly is happening with that. Thank you.
The two main careers I've had my entire life have been carpentry and coaching gymnastics. I've been highly involved with youth development. A good chunk of my life, my mom runs the daycare here in Portola. My sister ran the preschool down there in Greagle for years. So youth development and activity is extremely important to me. I guess the flip side of that, in my opinion, would be that there needs to be more parental grooming. You look at who's having kids these days, a lot of times it's kids themselves and we're in a generation of electronic devices over physical activity. So I go a lot along with what's already been touched on. I think that there needs to be more apprenticeships and trade schools for the ones that are coming out of high school and going into things. Because I just personally don't see a youth facility being what it could and would have been back in the day. I think we're dealing with a different caliber of children. So I guess, I guess that's about it.
I'm a bit of a contractor in this business here, Massama County. In the summer of two thousand and three, I was competing against eleven hundred licensed working contractors down there, and they were all building. In fact, through the recession, we had two cities down there that were going by nineteen percent. My daughter got her education, she was in junior college, and she now has fifteen years at Center Hospital. I believe that our answer for youth is education. And for the last eight years, I've been doing business with the High Sierra Community Development Center. I started with fifteen cap classes from a teaching company, which are on DVD on various subjects. I now have a hundred. When I was down in Massama County, I was the chair or the president of the site council in Heelsburg Middle School, and I was on the site council in Windsor, where we was able to get a new high school. I believe the answer is education for our children, not just recreation. At the same time, being in construction, I know it's a very good profession for those that aren't, and it's in tremendous demand now. But we have to have development prior to starting to be able to create those jobs. That's what my job is too. And my goal, if we get the one ninety-two project and get a decent development agreement for the Woodbridge project, we've got new jobs coming here, and we will have a demand for jobs in construction. That's what we need. We need to create the job opportunities, which developing the city of Portola for an economic center and a residential area is key to our future. By starting what we had started in two thousand and four that stopped, I'm really looking forward in jump-starting what we had going when I was on city council. And we need to do it right away. And the answer is educating our children for a vocational or a college education. Thank you.
Okay, Larry, you're, hold on to that. So we have a lot of questions about the economy and how, you sort of touched on this, but, how to jump-start the economy, what's your vision for Portola? Repairing the roads and infrastructure. And we've lost a lot of industry, you know, the mining, the logging, the railroad. What ideas do you have for reinventing the Portola economy? And how would you change the look of downtown Portola? So it's all of economy and infrastructure and the looks of downtown Portola.
In two thousand and four, I was on, participating in the streetscape program on Commercial Street. Since that time, we started houses on there, living in it when it was not even available. I really, probably what I've accomplished of that time. And I've also done landscaping and other areas on Commercial Street to do that. I also took over the community guard when I was there. But the vision of Portola is founded on our general plan. And we have one that was designed in two thousand, that if we had met its goals, we'd have a population of five thousand people right now. We wouldn't have problems with our general plan in these other areas because we would have the development. That was the vision of the people. The county just got to spending half a million dollars to create one. What is the point of putting on a general plan and trying to do your own individual visions when you've been designated by the population to do that? I am a community servant that's here to implement our general plan, which is the vision for twenty years, and we're going to be starting up one in two years. At the same time, we have a development, remember the Woodbridge? That when I was on the planning commission and given the information from leading California cities, I found we have a development agreement that's supposed to be for the best interest of the developer. It's not a means for the city to make money and bankrupt the developer that we had. If the Woodbridge project was going right now, we'd be in a whole lot different shape. We have to take and start getting a council that will follow the vision of the people in our general plans and implementing the projects that we have in our water and sewer plants. So we have to look at being servants of the community and not with our own visions and great ideas of how much money we can make. My brother brought in fifty million dollars in twenty years as a director of emergency services in public. It can be done.
Well, we could kick out half the population and just bombard social media with advertisements that were the next Star's Hollow, like off of Gilmore's Girls. Maybe that would attract a whole new influx of good booming economy. But on a serious note, I just think that it's a lot of pumping life back into community spirit, you know? I think that if people felt more pride in their town and their community, things kind of will automatically pick up and going back to the vocational training and trade schools and stuff. Like it's been talked about a lot, kids are getting out of high school and they have nothing here. So they're moving away unless if you are resourceful and you're able to go out and create your own job, you know, become self-employed like many of us do. You know, I know that's what I've done a majority of my life, to be able to stay here where I want to be. So I guess, basically, I think that we need to focus more on building the economy, building the community, and I think the economy will just kind of naturally follow.
I agree with Tim on this. When we moved here, the city was flourishing. All the stores on Commercial Street were filled. We had a clothing store, we had three or four restaurants. We had, I can't remember what else was there. Our craft store, anyway, it was filled. There was a sense of pride in our community. Everybody loved Portola at that time. The kids all loved Portola, it was a great place for them to be. We need to bring that sense of pride back. And when that sense of pride comes back, then you'll find people who are willing to volunteer to help make things better. Right now, as you know, many things, I mean, including from kid soccer to 4-H to everything else, one of the big problems is to get volunteers to help. And you can't have sports, you can't have a lot of these things if we don't have volunteers in the community. So until people start taking pride in the community again, we're going to have a hard time bringing some of these things about.
Okay, if I understood the question behind it was jobs relative to infrastructure. Jobs has always been a problem here. Portola kids would have to graduate, leave, come back later. But we have three places to sell wood chips for Kogen now. Loyalty's running, SBI Quincy's running, Honey Lake Power is taking jobs. We have several million acres of forest land that needs to be fire-safed and cleaned up. There are jobs there if we can find the funding for them, to give it back to grounds, I believe. Roads, we can't fix roads until we fix ones up. Those pipes were ancient when I took my first drink of water out of them sixty-seven years ago. But grounds is the answer there, and we seem to be gaining a lot of traction on that. I think give them a little time, have a lot of luck, it will come. Then we can fix our roads.
You know, it's hard to promote pride when you have one of the lowest welfare rates, or I should say highest, in the nation, not just California, in the nation. Did you know that average median income for the worker in Portola is less than what you can get on full-time welfare? How do you be proud in that? What we need is jobs. Now, I have two programs that will work. One is a package development. Now, package development is something that's just now starting. Here's what it amounts to. You take a company like down in Silicon Valley, they've been forced into a smaller... They've been forced into a smaller and smaller area. They got more traffic and more traffic. Their workers have to commute two hours each way because they can't get a place to live. All we have to do is identify those people and make them aware of Portola. Now, we can sell Portola simply because it is a nice place to live. I've lived here all my life. I've got opportunities to go other places and make a lot more money. I didn't want it. I wanted to stay here, and I have. Now, I don't have enough time to really go over this package program in detail, but I tell you what I will do. Anyone who wants to stop by my office, I will give you every detail of how it will work, when we can start, and when we can expect results. As far as Project 192, that's something very simple. We've got to revert to county ordinances as far as second disposal. By that, we have larger parcels. We don't have four houses per acre. We have one house or two and a half to three acres. We still have the city water system because we need that for fire protection. We revert to county standards for septic system. They will be in the ground next spring. And one of the first things that I will do when you vote me into office is contact those people, sit down with them, and explain, well, I believe it will work. Remember, I've been in real estate for 50 something years. I've done a lot of real estate projects, so I think they'll listen to me. It will work, but you have to have somebody in office that has the knowledge, the ability, and more importantly, the desire to do something.
So, I'd like to address it like this. 13 years ago, when I came to Portola, my first railroad days, they had motorcycles jumping down Commercial Street. They had four-wheel-drive trucks climbing over rocks. They had so many people that were on railroad days. So, I sit up here tonight and I'm listening to what's being presented. Now, I pose a question back to you. If we had the funding, a lot of this would be taken care of. If we had the funding, the sewer pipes, the roads, a lot of it would be taken care of. If we can look into grants and support our community for our economy, I would like to be able to see that when things are approved, that there's a plan involved, that we show you a plan of what we are going to do with that grant and with that funding. I also would think that it would be good to section off Portola in sections so that if we're doing Section 1, Section 1 gets complete, the community sees that that's been done. Section 2, Section 3. A lot of times, the city is all over, and they're doing a lot of work. I've worked closely with the city. They do a lot of work, but because it's not being seen in your community, you view it as maybe they're not doing it. But I can say that the city has done a tremendous job. Funding is number one. A plan of attack is number two, and to be able to show the public what's being done, actually being done.
I'll start at Commercial Street. I just heard that the Feelgood Cafe building sold. I think that's a good thing. The idea that the private enterprise that's now building the new events along Commercial Street should spruce it up a little bit. As far as the overall economy, it always seems like, oh, we ought to do something for the future. I want to do something for it now, and that's why I'm really encouraged about this planning group out of Chico State that's planning the infrastructure remodel, that does our sewer water and, by default, almost a lot of the paving because they've got to dig up all the streets so they can paint that. At one point, there was almost 40% of our workforce commuting to Reno for jobs. It's still awfully high. And what that does is two things. First of all, there goes all the money. You buy your groceries in Reno, so you don't buy them here. And second is, by the time all those workers get home, they're not even much of a road to volunteer for sports, for groups of any kind. So, they want to go to that for some reason. I can't figure it out. But we've lost a lot in that way because back when I was growing up, and some of us were growing up here, our moms and dads were working in town. And so, we do have to generate that. And I think it's got to be through recreation because there aren't many other things left. We can build houses, but we have to have another engine in order to make this thing work.
So, I'm pretty sure everybody expects me to say cannabis. You're right. I'm not so sure why everyone sits up here and says, oh, we just got to find something. And they're afraid to touch this with a 10-foot pole. In 2016, Portola voted 62% in favor of Proposition 64. How more, how much more do we need to say this is what we need to be doing here? If people have jobs, they'll spend money here, and that will infuse everything else that we're missing. We don't need to create something that we just don't know what it is. It's already here. For the past six years or so, I've been working, doing catering for Lena's Cantina. We do a lot of stuff down in Grayville. It's pretty hot happening down there in the summer. We have a lot of people, outside people, coming in, and they'll ask, oh, do you live here? And we say, well, I live in Portola. And they say, where's that? So, we have all these people, all somewhere along, spending their money down there, and they don't even know we're here. We have the same recreational resources, the same tourist opportunities that's 10 miles down the road. If we can tap into those and bring some of those people, maybe they'll spend another weekend and come here. Our bike race, they, what, we had 1,200, 1,200 people. They come once a year. If we can have some other types of events that they'll, maybe they'll come two or three times a year, 1,200 people. So, I think our outdoor recreation is a big thing right now, and I think that's a good way to bring money into our community. You know, maybe it'll bring money in, create some jobs. Maybe we can have more people in town. Maybe we'll get some more restaurants. Maybe, you know, those types of, more people in hotels. We have the bed and breakfasts, the vacation rentals, and just kind of boost everybody up that way.
I told myself I'll try to behave myself tonight, but anyway, like I said, you know, I've been attending the city council meetings for the last four, five years regularly, and I know the problems. I know everything that's happening in Portola, okay? I'd like to ask some of you, how many of you have actually come to the city council and tried to find out what's going on into the community? I've seen maybe a few of them, and some of them, they say, oh, yeah, you know, they don't do this, they don't do that. And I said, you know, don't complain. Come to the city council and voice your concerns, okay? And you know what? Everybody wants to. They think that being a city council member is great. There are more to it. You have to know the duties and responsibilities that goes with a job in the territory. And, you know, it's not easy. And I'm telling you, we've got lots of problems. And that's what, and I wish that some of you would come to the city council and know exactly what they're going through. And I admire them for wanting to be in the position, okay? And also, let me tell you something. While I was going to the city council meeting, I videotaped all of the meetings. I even have a website, and I share it with the community. Do you think any of them would respond? No, they only would respond if they have any complaints. And I think it takes more than just complaining. You have to be proactive and know what's going on in your community. Thank you very much. Do I go again?
I guess I'm the lucky one.
So, Stan's going to, we're going to go this way, hand it this way, okay? Okay, Stan, the next question is on cannabis, and we have some questions here. One is, when will you lift the, I'm going to just read them all together because they all fit in. When will you lift the moratorium? What's your position on Measure B? And how, and what's your stand on the cannabis issue? How do you feel about someone growing commercial, wait. How do you feel about someone commercially growing cannabis next door to you? So, it's your stand on cannabis issue, your position on Measure B, when will you lift the moratorium here in the city of Portola? And what do you feel about somebody growing cannabis right commercially next door to you? So, blend that all into us the answer.
I'll try to do my best. So, there's a couple of questions that I am not, to be honest with you, I'm not familiar with. And this is one of the reasons that I choose and I'm interested in running for a transparent position is so that I could not only learn for our community, but to be able to make a good decision that propels our community forward, that allows us to move forward, not only financially, but if it works for the community, that's one thing. We talked about our economy. If it works for our economy, that's great. As far as, to be honest with you, if I had a grower right next to my house, I honestly don't think I would be comfortable with that. I, granted, now you have industries that are professional, their business and so forth. It's not that I make a stance one way or another regarding cannabis. I just think when you're living right next to a growing area, also brings other people. If it was a secured and security area where the community was safe, that would be great. And so, thank you.
I, every time I run for office, any office, I've always put out a list of standards that you could count on. Here's what I wrote. This was written 20 years ago. I will never doubt any issue regardless of how politically volatile that issue might be. Now's the time to live up to what I wrote 20 years ago. I don't even smoke cigarettes, but here's what I think has occurred nationwide. The moral decision has been made that people want marijuana, for whatever reason. They want marijuana. So, the next step is what we do about it is the city council, here's what we do. I am not in favor of anyone growing neighborhood to neighborhood to neighborhood. That will cause total chaos. That will cause increased crime, and we can't allow it. What we've got to do is work up a formula to treat it like any other industry or crop. It has to be zoned in certain areas. It has to be regulated in certain areas, and it has to be patrolled. We can't just let it grow anywhere. But the fact is, they've made the moral decision nationwide, not just here. So, we can't stop it. But what we can do is prepare for it, and that's what I'm willing to do. And as I said, may not, people don't like the idea of me saying they have to do that, but that's what we have to do. We have to prepare for it. We have to zone it. We have to regulate it and seek to ensure that it doesn't hurt the people in Portola, and that can be done.
Okay, about the moratorium, I'm not sure when it'll be lifted, but I think it should be. About Measure B, I've heard the arguments on both sides, back and forth for a very long time. I just got my valid information in the mail today. I'll be studying it when I get home tonight. A commercial grow, large commercial grows, I would be opposed to. Where in Portola would we put them? But if I had a grower living next door to me, he had it fenced, had it vended, whatever, so that it wasn't a nuisance to me, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I believe in living well.
I'm not sure when the moratorium will be lifted either. Right now, we don't have the space required for a commercial grow in Portola, and so I don't foresee that we will ever have a commercial grow. Right now, you can grow six plants per household in residential area, and there are some things that has to be vended. It has to be enclosed. I'm not against marijuana. I know a lot of my friends who use it for medical purposes and otherwise. But I just don't see a commercial grow in the city of Portola. We have no agricultural land or the space to put a commercial grow within a city limits.
Similar to Stan, there's a couple of those first questions that I'm unfamiliar with. On the cannabis factor, me personally, I've never enjoyed it as a user, but I've also never had issues with people who do. You know, I know that in harvest time, it can be a god-awful smell. So, if you're a neighbor and somebody's growing next door, it's that time of year, it can be miserable. So, you know, I don't know ways around that. I suppose you could do like a parameter permit for anybody wanting to grow beyond what the current allowed amount is. Something else I was going to say. What was it? Somebody remind me? You know, I know there's a lot of money. You know, I know people who do grow, and they are far more successful than I am, and I work my ass off every single day, and all they're doing is growing some plants. So, I think that as long as things are done within reasonable parameters, you know, you maintain communication with community and your society, then I don't see any reason why things couldn't be worked around. So, that's my thoughts.
This has been quite an issue in the county and the city, and there's been a lot of discussion over it. And I believe there's been a good reason for the moratorium, and a lot of us will wait and see. Back in Public, Colorado, where my brother lives, I was out there, and they found a marijuana grow on private property. And they didn't know what it was because they brought the police and helicopters and everything. So, it's also not just legal. It's the illegal problems, and it's not the use of, it's abuse of, whether it's cannabis, or whether it's alcohol, or whether it's ibuprofen. And what we're looking now is the expense of trying to enforce these codes, whether it's Sonoma County, or whether it's Calaveras, or what is trouble. It comes down to revenue does not cover the expense of trying to please it. And if we want to look at ways of economic recovery, I look at the best thing this county has done is grow fish. I can see creating a fisheries and organic fisheries, organic farms out in the Sierra Valley where the cannabis grows. I look at restoring Lake Davis being the fishery it used to be in the 70s, where we used to have 10,000 people coming on a weekend. These are areas that aren't harmful and aren't expensive to operate. These are areas I feel that we have to work in for economic development, where they're going is something that sort of causes more and create more problems for our community in trying to manage human behavior and health and healthcare. Those are my personal feelings because I've had problems in my family with the abuse. It impacts everybody in the family and the community.
Cannabis, okay. I'm quite familiar with the industry, and I support the medical values of marijuana. But as far as the Measure B, let me tell you something. I know some of the growers in the plumastani, and I, let me tell you something about, they say it's going to be a very new thing for the plumastani in Portola. Initially, if you're bonded, if you want to be in the marijuana business, you have to be bonded. You have to, it requires six types of bond, and each bond will cost you $5,000. Now, let me ask, I just wanted to know, how many of these growers right now are really bonded? Are they just going to get bonded for growing? How many of them are actually doing the distribution, the retailing, the, you know, everything else? You know, Measure B is lacking transparency as far as I'm concerned, and let me tell you something. What I, you know, I figure it's going to be, it's going to come up. Measure B authors not only prioritize themselves for commercial cannabis licenses, they lock them in for life. They wrote their Measure B priority licensing scheme to require plumas to renew their licenses annually. to require plumbers to renew their licenses annually. They also made Measure B to allow them to pass their licenses onto their descendants. When it come to nepotism and highly unconstitutional licensing monopolies, Measure B authors stand alone, but they won't stand unchallenged. If Measure B passes, lawsuits will come, and we, the taxpayer, will pay for the bill. I think that's gonna happen. You know, you know what? We have a moratorium, and I support the moratorium. I feel that Plumas County is not ready for commercial growing. And one more thing. Okay, stop.
Pass it to the next, pass it to the next, Cassie, or Casey.
I don't think commercial growing belongs in the city. I just don't see that we have to reform it. I'm not against marijuana leafs. I have neighbors that do their personal grows and people that use it, but I just don't think the commercial end of it belongs in the city. I know we've had commercial grows out in the valley. Didn't have good experience with those people. So that's just my own personal belief. So as for commercially, you know, countywide, I'm not too keen, but if that's what the county decides to do, you know. So that's my thoughts.
I almost feel like I'm cheating on this question. Obviously, as I said during the introductions, I'm co-author of Measure B. So I spent a year on working group, studying all of the laws, all of the regulations that go into cannabis. And so of course, I'm gonna say that I support it. However, Measure B isn't for the city. It's not gonna affect the city other than the fact that it surrounds us, but it's not gonna be active inside the city. And if I was writing a Measure B for the city, you'd probably be surprised to know that I wouldn't put cultivation here. There are plenty of other commercial cannabis businesses that we can benefit from here. The city is not set up to do cultivation. So I'm not sure if I should address some of the things that Terry said. Really quick, anytime you have a business, something that you own, if you were to die, you have the right to pass that to your children. So in Measure B, should you die, your family, or whoever you choose, has a small window of time to reapply for that license, so your business doesn't get shut, and your employees don't lose their jobs. I don't believe that's what she's claimed.
When Proposition 64 passed in the state, they set the round-the-world rules for HEB local jurisdictions. And that includes Plumas County and then Portola. Portola got busy last year with that directive from the state, and set our own regulations and rules. As Pat said earlier, you can grow six plants if it's enclosed, your neighbors can't see it, or it doesn't affect your neighbors in any way. That's part of the rule inside the city. Kim is right too, that whatever happens right around us will definitely affect our economy. We've had these three businesses in town who have talked with me as a council member, and asked if they could maybe start some sort of sale. What we do right now is we allow people with a medical prescription to order their marijuana from, or cannabis products, I guess, from other places. And under permit, they can have them delivered in town. But they've gotta have a permit from the city of Portola to transport it in and out of town. We think it's a pretty good law, the way it's written, the regulations in Portola. And the moratorium doesn't actually affect Portola, it just affects the county. And so whatever the supervisors decide in their future, whenever they get around to lifting the moratorium, I expect will affect our future decisions.
Why don't you pass it to Phil Olds, and we'll start with him. Okay, the next question is, we've lost our fire department, how do we get that back?
Yeah, the fire department lost me, it's a personal heartbreak. I have a lot of friends who work there. Getting it back, wow, how do you recruit volunteers? We need to take another look at the standards that we're asking. Specifically, as is, they're required to pay for their own training. I don't believe that's right. I mean, these guys are willing to risk their lives, going to burn buildings for $10 a call, and we can't afford to train them. Need to loosen that up, and need to find volunteers desperately. Portola needs to have its own fire department. What happens if we have one, and Eastern Plumus has one at the same time? We're in trouble. And also, the other point there is that the fire department was always a source of pride for the members who were in it, and a good source of volunteers for other projects here in Portola. Specifically, the River Walk, they were down there a lot. Anyway, not sure how we need to, or how to do it, makes us know that we need to do it.
The fire department was put on an administrative stand-down because we had a lack of qualified volunteers to do that. We had, I think, 10 qualified people, and out of those, four or five of them work in the summertime on the wildland fires. So they weren't even here to be available for fires. So we, with NorCal, who does the certifications for EMS and everything, were told that we needed to get the people and have them certified. What we've done is we put the fire department on administrative stand-down. We have a two-year contract that can be stopped at any time. The Eastern Plumus is taking the qualified volunteers from Portola who want to into their department, they're training them. And so as soon as we can get enough volunteers who are trained and qualified, we hope to open our Portola Fire Department back up.
I guess that kind of leads into where I was gonna go with it. I guess you kind of have to understand why it got shut down in the first place to really have much of an opinion. So I'm glad you settled that, because I never really knew any of that. On my opinion about it, I think it is sad to see it go. I've known a lot of people that have been on there for years. I was with Eastern Plumus for several years when I was a kid. You know, there was a whole bunch of us in the Explorers Program. And like Phil said, that was a huge part of the volunteer labor that happened. All the events I remember going to as a kid, volunteering with the fire department and helping out with community things. So I also think it's kind of a, kind of a black mark on a city. You know, you can drive through little teeny tiny villages, and they've got a freaking fire department. And then you come to, you know, Portola city limits, and they don't even have a fire department. So it's kind of funky, if you ask me. I know that I've worked with a lot of people that drove me insane, just to, "Go get 'em cowboy firefighters blast in, guns blazing," you know. A little over the top, but there's a lot of people that really did do it out of pure love and kindness and a good place, you know, not just for show. So I think it's sad to see it go, and I think that we do need to see it come back.
I'm glad to hear the reasons for closing down, because we never really got an answer before from the city council. What I did know was that the complaints about the EMS was the basic reason for shutting the fire department down. And yet, with fire tax, we never agreed to fund EMS. That's been done by the Eastern Plumus Healthcare for a long time, and even had an agreement between the city and the hospital that we wouldn't be doing that because it's competitive. So once again, we're getting back to the funding of it. The city is different than the county. And in typical full-service cities, the city pays between right around two-thirds of the general fund for fire and police services. We're not doing that either for either service. And this is why I talked about, we don't have the money for my private services, but we have the money for other things. We have to get our priorities straight. When we shut down the fire department, we took a quarter of the potential of our firefighters away from the county. We then put it on in Eastern Plumus Fire District, which has been doing a fantastic job. But we, last month, we only hit one fire, and we had 26 calls on the EMS. We have to improve that. If you want to do EMS, put a fire tax on and get it approved. You're doing things that the city is not doing. And this is why I'm a member of Harvest and Harvest Tax Credits Association, voted for Prop 19 and 218. You need to get the public's approval to spend the public's money. And we want performance for our money. This is what I'm looking at. What we need in the next term is to get the fire department going, pay for their training, because their volunteers like that policy. I'll give you my time, but I don't have the money to hand out to you. I think the volunteers feel the same way. They're given their time, but taking the time for the training, but you're not even paying for their training. We have got the funds to do it if you want to make those bars.
Hi. I love the fire, anybody that's in the fire department, you know, I love them. I mean, I support them. I think they save lives, and we owe a lot to them, okay? But let me tell you something. I think the problem with this fire department in Portola is lack of training. The people, the person who was heading the fire department was lacking. And also, we didn't have the right equipment. Going back to when the galleys were down, some of the fire, our fire department couldn't even find, didn't even know how to put the hose on the fire hydrant. And some of the fire hydrants were covered with the rocks. And if it weren't for the lightning, it's Beckworth that came down here, the whole town would have burned down. I mean, that is a shame. And after that incident, I know that the city council, the city hall, they're trying, they're doing their best to do something about that, okay? Unfortunately, right now, we lost the fire department, but I think that we can get the right support and help from the Plumus Fire, from the Eastern Plumus Fire Department. And, you know, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
We definitely need to get our fire department back up and running. Just attending meetings in the last couple of months, and the city's actually working on getting things organized and inventories done. So they are working on it, that's great. And I think, you know, providing the training versus them paying for their own is an incentive to get people to volunteer.
I don't know that there's much that hasn't already been touched on for this. Obviously, volunteers, we need them. And I would assume that there's probably people around that have the time, but they can't afford the certification. So we need to be able to work with those people to get the volunteers. But we have someone providing fire services to us now, and we should take this opportunity to reevaluate what we need in a fire department before we get it going again.
Over the years, there was quite a competition between the Portola Fire Department and Eastern Plumus, and we used to kind of make fun of each other. I think Eastern Plumus used to have to drive through parts in their district. They served A15 area, Rocky Point area, Grisda Road area, up the hill, down the hill, and Delaware. And now it's sort of come around, I think. And so one of the things that's been talked about quite a bit is consolidation. I talked with a friend of mine who is on the Smoke Fire Department, and they are having to say, they're about to dissolve because they can't find any volunteers. Sierra Valley is in the same predicament. Beckworth struggles, but Beckworth still has a viable contingent. It happens in Crescent Hills, and it happens across rural America. People get older, they can't serve 40 years on the fire department. It gets a little stressed. I think the only thing to do is to offer training free for anyone who's willing to volunteer. But get the age group that maybe 10 belongs to, and say, hey, even if you can only be here a part of the time, let's get twice as many as we need for at least half the time and make it work. Because I don't know what else we can do. We had two really old, really old, younger than me, really old former fire department people rehab our equipment so Eastern Plumus could use it, and I think that was great.
So when I think about our Portola Fire Department, for one reason or another, it seems to have failed, okay? So now that we don't have our Portola Fire Department, what do we do? What do we do? So my thing is, even though we're Plumus County, but we're the city of Portola, so why not get Plumus County fire departments together? Find out what's successful in how they run their fire department. Get them together for the sake of us in the city of Portola. Come up with a plan. Even the so-called old timers that are probably too old to get up on a ladder or pull a hose, use them the rights of policies. Use them the rights of procedures. Bring back the love of fire departments and their camaraderie that they've had. The pride of wanting to be a fire department. Another thing in our community too is, I truly feel that these type of areas, like fire departments, these type of areas, we as a community should do something for them. We do a community dinner for people who just want to come and eat. Why not do a community dinner once a month, or once every quarter, strictly to thank the fire department? Give them a sense of feeling that it's prideful to work for and be a part of the city of Portola. Again, I really think that when we look at outlying fire departments and look at their success, we can learn from our failure.
Well, I was waiting for this one, I was hoping it was gonna happen. You know, the most important function of any government entity is health and safety. Because without that, the other things really don't matter. And I want everybody to consider this. The fire department just didn't shut down overnight. Some of the people sitting up here have been residing over the gradual decline of our fire department for several years. Now, I talked to three different individuals who was on that fire department on 50 years apiece. The reason they gave up, they said they didn't get the support of the city council, so they quit. Now, if there is an answer, we need training. I understand the new rules and regulations. I'll use the same procedure that I'm gonna use to attract jobs. There's a lot of firefighters in the Bay Area and all those various areas. They're tired of being shot at when they go on fire. They're tired of being worked, and tired of being underappreciated. We get a list of those people, which is all public knowledge. We send a letter to them and say, hey, we need people up here who are qualified to train our fire department. We're willing to help you move up here. Why don't you come up and visit Portola? And give us an opportunity to meet some of these people, and let you know that you're gonna be welcome. This is a nice place to live. Now, you can't tell me if we send out a thousand of those letters to just the Bay Area firefighters, that we can't get eight or 10 of them to say, hey, we wanna go and take a look. Once we get them up here, and they meet some of the people here, I think they'll stay. But I want everybody to remember, this fire department just didn't shut down overnight. It's been going downhill, as everybody knows, for several years. These people had plenty of opportunity to do something. They didn't. Well, now we've gotta start over. But no one feels worse about our fire department shutting down than me. I remember as a little kid, they used to have Christmas parties, they had dinners, they had all this. The fire department funded themselves and actually put extra money up for the kids for Christmas. The General Mary knows that, he was there. And yet, now they say they don't have enough money to operate? No, I won't accept that. If I get elected, we will have a fire department, period. That's health and safety, and that's gonna come first.
Okay, we're running out of time. Can you pass that all the way down to Terry? And we'll just, we're gonna have our closing statements. And we'll just, we're going to have our closing statements. Now, there were some questions. I wanted to get them in, but it's, we're running out of time. But you could incorporate it in your closing statement if you want. And I'll just read them. How many council meetings have you attended in the last year? And explain what this says about your level of commitment to the city. Would you restore the integrity of the community as a whole? Use one word, please. That's what that question was. And why are there so few of us here in the audience? How would you involve the community? If you would like to answer those in your closing statement, feel free to do so. I just put those out there because we're running out of time. But we're going to do the closing statements now. And we'll start with Terry.
I ran for city council twice, lost twice. And I told myself I'll never run for city council ever again. However, in dealing with the public as a business owner, I've met some great people and friends, and they became part of my family that I do care about. Some people think that tourism and commercial marijuana will solve the problems here in Portola and Namoskane. I say that the future of Portola is unknown. And I'll repeat myself on this. Unless you have been proactive, make efforts to attend the city council meeting, have insight firsthand knowledge and thorough understanding of the duties and responsibilities of a city council member and the problems that goes with it, you're just wasting your time. It would be like putting up a facade to a building or a house to make it look attractive, yet ignoring the walls and the rotting foundation. And also, at the recent council meeting, somebody said this to me, okay? I went, well, he made his stomach. If you want to invite guests to your home, you better clean up your house and get rid of the trash first. I thought he was right on target. To conclude, I don't like to make promises I can deliver or talk just to be talking. I will try to do my best to work, to cooperate, to influence other city council members and city staff in planning, coordinating, and implementing sensible, realistic rules, policies, regulations, to study its budget and to prioritize urgent and doable contracting programs or projects necessary to turn Portola into a place where people would like to visit, live, raise a family, thrive, or still retire. I thank you for supporting my candidacy. Good night.
I started attending the council meetings in July after turning in my paperwork to run as a council member. I want to, if elected, be current with what's happening. So until the election, then I'll be attending the meetings until then and after. As long as I can remember, it just seems like the council's always been made up of a small group of people that just kind of come in and out of office. Very rarely do we see new faces. It's usually the same people that are willing to do it. Right now, we have four out of five seats, and we have 11 candidates. I think that shows that people are ready to do something, to have a change, kind of shake it up. Now's the time to do that change for this election. We need to choose some fresh minds with some new perspectives so that we can create a new Portola and, you know, be proactive in moving Portola into a prosperous future. I hope that I can earn community's confidence and earn their votes so that I can be a part of this change in our community. That I love. Thank you. I don't want everyone to think that my only concern is cannabis, but the questions just kind of got me there tonight. So I just want to let everybody know that I believe outside of cannabis, that the city would benefit from doing an economic study. One that can help us determine our strengths and our weaknesses. Something that we can use to determine where we want to direct our city resources. Something that will give us the highest chance of success. And will keep us from some of the pitfalls that we could hit by just kind of guessing where we're trying to go. Cannabis may not be the answer, and we need to have some other plans. And I think that's the safest way for us to determine what kind of resources we have. We've spent a lot of time doing things for tourists. And the people in the city feel like second-class citizens. And that's why they're not here.
I think we do have to come up with an economic plan. I've preached for many years now that with the explosive expansion of Farina, we used to be 50 miles away and now it's about 35, I think they're going to build right out to the border. That a lot of the people that are leaving our town to go to work every day and every night are bringing one piece of value back, and maybe only one. And that is, they're learning new skills and new trades. They're also seeing a little city that's turning into a mid-sized city and it's getting really hard to live there. The expense and everything else. They would prefer to stay in Portola. And I want to encourage each and every one of them to bring their knowledge back and help reinvent us because I think it's going to take some reinvention. Portola built this town with railroads mainly, with the mill in Delaware mainly. And now we need a new engine. And that engine is going to serve us as a service community to all the subdivisions and developments around us. We are always going to be that service community. And I want it to be the best service community we've ever seen. Thank you.
So first of all, I would like to thank all of the candidates here. We might share different views or different opinions, but the one thing we agree on is we care enough about the city to be up here in front of all of you. Second of all, I have expressed my work in ties with Eastern Plumas Healthcare. First and foremost, it's my family. Second of all, it would be my commitment and ongoing commitment to my job would support my family. With that 11-year commitment, I look forward to learning the process. And I've gained a lot of budget and knowledge that way. And if the opportunity for me to sit in one of these council seats, I tell you this evening, my commitment will not change for the city of Portola. I want to reiterate to all of you that my focus is the senior class, Harvey, to make sure that they are headed somewhere. Of course, the infrastructure of Portola, the roads, sewer lines, working close with the city of Portola to have a game plan there. And I would also like to, before I end, share my concern about the elderly. I would love for the city of Portola to look at age group of the elderly that have oxygen, that are living by themselves, that are on home health. So that when we do have power outages and we do have winter storms and flooding, that we visit these elderly to make sure that they're good. We've had many times where people have shown up at the hospital, no power, no oxygen. I really think that we can do something for the elderly too. And thank you for your time.
Almost every candidate, in fact, every candidate tonight has stressed two things. One, we need jobs. We need real estate development. And two, we need something to prepare our youth for the future, you know, to do something for them. I've already pointed out tonight, first off, I've done more subdivisions than any other individual around that's still living. Harvey West did have the record, but Harvey West, unfortunately, is not here anymore. And I've also started, funded, and taught three different vocational programs. Now, I don't expect any of you people that doesn't know me to really take this at face value. What I encourage you to do is to come in my office tomorrow and say, what the hell are you talking about? I want to see proof of what you did. That's what I want you to see. In the meantime, you can give a little more history because that's only a small part of it. All the people that are in public office automatically make Google. You just do. Today. Well, there's an article in media, in fact, it's a whole series of stuff in Google. I have no idea who put it there. I didn't write it. Somebody compiled it. I have a few copies tonight if you wish to read it. And if you don't, all you need to do is Google Supervisor Pearson Plumas. Now, if you want to know about the other candidates, like Mr. Powers, you Google Supervisor Powers Plumas, and something will come up. Now you have a way to really compare what I've done with the others. And I ask you to do that. This is an important election. If you want a future, a real future for your children, if you want this town to have at least a chance to get back where we have a fire department we can be proud of, and the people are happy to walk up and down the street and they like each other, then vote for me. If that's what you want, I'll get a debt.
Sitting here thinking about all the issues, and yes, we have a lot. But as a community, we have the strength to deal with them. Mostly what we need is your representatives. That's way more input from you guys. Don't sit back and complain. Tell us what you think we need to do. I personally have always been more than glad to do that. I've always thought my job was 80% listen and 20% do. And parting thought on commitment. For years now, there's been a raging debate amongst my family and my friends. This job pays $300 a month, I think. Now, the question is, do I make $0.30 an hour or is it poor?
I hope I have answered your questions. If not, you can contact me at 832-5880, and I would be happy to talk to you about your concerns. I believe Portola is a little city that can recover, move forward, and overcome the obstacles in her path. It is not easy, with all the state and federal regulations, to negotiate along the way. But with patience and persistence, it can be accomplished. Some of the things on the city council is, we have the 192 project is still in force. We have the bike race that comes every year. Now for the third year. One of the problems with that is, when you have that many people come, we don't have enough beds within Portola or the area around us to house all those people. So we have camping. We've opened up camping in the ballfields in the city park to accommodate those as a way to get that event to run in the city. The railroad museum is up. We've worked, the city has worked closely with them over the last couple of years. They have some big plans for an event center there that will be enclosed. A terrain that will run through the back of Portola, at which I'd like to see completed. Water and Sewer Grant, we're pursuing that. Right now, it's looking very promising that we'll get it. We're working with the city of Chico. And that will hopefully be $35 million. It may be less, but we're hoping for $35 million. I think that's a lot that we've done in the last few years. And I would like the chance to continue working to see some of these projects completed and for the city to move forward. Thank you.
Well, as I'm sure you've all discovered by now, I'm not a politician, so... But I am grateful for this opportunity to come here. It's been cool. I like to take it all in. One thing about me is, you know, I don't like to be taught things per se. I like to learn. I've always said that you can teach a kid not to touch the wood stove, but he didn't learn that it was hot until he actually touched it. So that's kind of my plan going forward. I need to engulf myself more and get up to date with the current events because obviously I just work, work, work like crazy. So I haven't gone to as many of the council meetings as I should. But moving forward, I need to start doing that more. I mingle with all calibers of people. I have people way up here that respect me and I respect them. And I've got bottom-of-the-barrel people that respect me and I respect them. So I like to think I'm a very adaptable and versatile individual. I think that a little communication goes a long way. You know, people get stuck thinking that there's one way and one way only. And I think that's bullish. I think that there's always a middle ground for certain things. So that would be, my intentions would be try to unify the community again, find happy mediums, find ways to keep prop and, you know, goodness in the community. So, thank you, guys.
Since 2003, I've been showing up at city council meetings because I'm passionate about our future. On May 12, 2004, I decided to run for city council. I have not stopped. I am a citizen concerned with the policies, performance, and conduct of city's decision-makers. I was appointed to serve the city as the planning commissioner and a rep of Plumas Corp. Mano said no interest in positions. I was elected to the city council in 2004. Since then, I'm a self-appointed watchdog and community activist for businesses and low-income families. I'm concerned with that our leaders' loss of hotel deal. I'm concerned at the failure of the Woodbridge project. I'm concerned with the performance of other development projects. I'm concerned with the loss of local businesses. I'm concerned with the increase in water and sewer rates. I'm concerned with fire protection and frontline law enforcement, not to make excuses in our streets. If elected, I will be a decision-maker who focuses on these concerns and listens to yours with an open mind.
Okay. Okay, well, that wraps up our form tonight. But I really just want to say, you know, we admire you for running because it's so important for people to run for these seats. And it's important to have competition and show your ideas and your vision. I just want to, oh, I forgot to introduce. We have the editor of Feather Publishing here. She does an excellent job, Deborah Moore. She'll have a great coverage of your answers in the newspaper. Terry, she, Terry Woods did film it. I don't know, or maybe it'll be on YouTube. So if she decides to put it up there. But, and thank you all for coming out tonight, all my lead members helping to put this on. Now we can give, I just want to say, take home your name tags plates because it'll be a little souvenir that you ran for office. And also, let's give everybody a big hand.
Thanks, guys.
Hello. Can you have any, can you have any white shirts?